Councilmember Anne Steady, did you have a call?
Yes, we did.
Okay, let the record up that councilmember, Kirk Rattler, was at for the meeting tonight. Power hats, please, for identification. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day that you have given us to live our lives. We thank you so much for every blessing that we have upon us. We ask for you tonight to look at what we do as being in your service, and we are grateful for this day that you have given us. Amen. And Dr. Proctor, would you lead us on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberty which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are going to open this meeting as a continuation of our last meeting. I think that our city attorney had to be straight on this. And we will do that. This will be a public hearing. And council, you have in front of you the agenda. I would attend a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Subtle.
Anne, and the second, please.
Second.
Gee, thank you. A motion and second, and a discussion by council. All in favor, please say aye. Posited, and our agenda is adopted. The new business that we have, a public hearing, consideration of a request for variance from SEC 94-16, lot and building regulations of the City of Jasper zoning ordinance for Pinnacle towns. This would be 2023-06. And we'll ask Mary Burgess to bring that to us. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening, Miss Mayor, council. Mayor Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. So in front of you, you have a variance request for the entirety of Pinnacle townhomes off of Philadelphia. It is, the applicant is S D H Atlanta, and the owner is Gary Copeland. If you recall, this was previously rezoned to R3 in 2020, and then for an apartment complex. And then it moved on to be sold, and they came in with the townhome project. So what we're discussing today is an era that had previously been made, whereas all the existing homes and the plat all illustrate a building line setback, front setback at 20 feet versus the required 25 feet. As in, in an effort to change and update this and make the townhomes legitimate, as I would say, we are asking for a blanket variance for every lot in the subdivision to be set at 20 feet. We're doing this because in the future, if any of the existing residents or future residents would like to do anything, alter their townhome, they would be in conflict with not meeting our setbacks. So they would have to go seek a variance at that time. So we're trying to take the burden off the residents. And then also, the developer has vested right with the existing setback as the previous director signed off on the plat which illustrated that building setback law.
So council, would you have any questions? We won't have a vote on this tonight, so we'll go to our next meeting. But any questions for Mary to answer at this point in time on my page?
How many of the current townhomes is in progress?
Eighty-one. When it's settled down, they're eighty-one.
And since this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience who has any questions about this particular item?
Or desires to make a public comment. It's a public hearing, so generally, we ask whether anyone wants to speak in favor. And then if there's no, then we ask if anyone wants to speak in office.
You're assuming that I want somebody to make a public comment. Thanks, David. Or desires to make a public comment. You know, that can entail the whole world, but on this particular issue, so. So if anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this? If not, thank you, and don't go anywhere, because I think we have another one right here. Item two is discussion of proposed text amendments to the City of Jasper zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and zoning map ordinance, 2023-07, and Mary, again.
Good evening, members. Again, Mayor Elizabeth Burgess, Development Director. So as you know, we have been working on the zoning ordinance update. And at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Tanya up from C P L, who is much better versed with all the changes to the zoning ordinance and the sign code.
Hi, Tanya. Thank you for being here.
Hello, good evening.
The stage is yours, so.
All right, there you go. Thank you. Okay, we'll pull this. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me today this evening. My name is Tanya Salasleva. I work with Clark Patterson Lee. We have been working closely with your staff to make some updates to your zoning ordinance. So I'm just going to try to hit the high-level stuff. But if at any point in time you guys have any questions, feel free to stop me, and I can explain or assist them anyway. So the purpose of this update is, as you may remember, C P L assisted with the rewrite of your zoning code in 2021, adopted a new one. It's a bit more modern, kind of brought things up to more current best practices. As with any good code, you know, once you get it into the field and implemented, you start noticing little fine tunings that could be necessary to really make it a more effective ordinance. So we reopened the zoning code in order to integrate some of the recently adopted ordinance list that occurred over the course of the year. And also just to address some staff procedural concerns, to make things a little bit more clear as regards annexation, to provide a little bit more controls and architectural guidance when addressing your zoning districts, to incorporate new state-level zoning procedural law changes as regards timelines and advertisements, and other updates as requested by staff. So what are the summary of our current key changes? So in general, when we're looking at your permitting process as a whole, we have now required that drawings be prepared by engineers or architects for plans that are going to be vertical. For your surveys, we allow engineers and surveyors to stand up those drawings, but the stamp is now required when you're submitting those papers in for a permit. We have also, as I said, updated some design standards. We've integrated some graphics and some guidance on how you can break up facades to make them more interesting, so you don't get recurring architecture all straight in the road. Adds a little bit more character to residential districts. We've added some downtown design standards for commercial properties, some common elements to those facades that you see in various historic districts. For example, recessed entries, and we'll get to those in a moment. There's also a graphic in the code that we've now added. We made adjustments to your utility requirements following staff direction. We've now required covenants to be provided and for an HOA to basically remain in perpetuity when there are private amenities or infrastructure that is being built as part of new developments. We've integrated some guidance to assist in the decision-making for annexation processes. There's a lot of growth happening. It's expanding upwards. So this is just intended to make the process a little bit more transparent and to just have something you can refer to when making the plethora of those decisions. As I mentioned, we've updated to reflect state changes as regards zoning procedures laws. One recurring change you'll see throughout the document is that what the state legislation did is that it shifted things. It, it, I want to say this clearly, one moment. We've changed your codes so where the term "condition" we used was, it's now "special use", and that reflects more of a legislative process. So we just tweaked your language, but it has implications on how it's regarded in terms of how your authority is being implemented. And in order to make it more aligned with the legislative decision, instead of a quasi-judicial decision, we've now had to switch the terminology around. That's the code of that. In terms of your specific changes to residential districts, big change is kind of aligned with the annexation conversation. We've now created two new zoning districts. Your multi-family residential district, which is for, as the name implies, multi-family residential products, and a special district for attached products. So townhomes, for example, would be a newly attached district. And we stripped those uses from your R2 and your R3 districts. The idea is, if you're looking to come into the city, and you probably have a very specific project in mind, we wanted to set the groundwork in for you to request a district specific to that use. So that's another change that we've made. As regards your P U Ds, we've added some criteria to help promote mixed-use developments as part of those projects, or rather, to strengthen the mixed-use requirement that you already have. For example, we will now, we now have requirements that depending on the size of your assembly, you have to provide a minimum square footage of an alternative non-residential use as part of your project, which is a really great thing to have in your code. Makes it much clearer what the intent is when developers are looking at it. And as regards your use table, which is a great use table, we've also added some provisions for institutional healthcare-related uses. And we've strengthened or clarified your accessory structure provisions to make sure that they are truly supporting a secondary structure, not secondary, but subordinate structures on your lot. We don't want accessory structures to be combating with the primary use, which should be the primary structure, the residential use of land. And we also made some mixed-use requirements in your central business district. So that's the high level. I think what we've also focused on is trying to concentrate information when we know people are going to be looking. So you have Table 94-16, which summarizes the majority of your requirements. This sets the guidelines that developers can pull up and just quickly reference to draw the conceptual plans that they have. We've added some new columns in here. For example, we've clarified density. That's a new column. Your units per acres are now here. We look to your comp plan and to your staff to help draft those recommendations. We've integrated a maximum impervious surface ratio. Impervious surface refers to asphalt or anything from which stormwater does not filter into the soil. This is, we set maximums in to kind of work hand-in-hand with your current open space requirements to... It's a stormwater thing. It's a stormwater best practice. Those two go hand-in-hand to ensure that you have control over how much of that runoff is going into your system. We've also added the single-family attached and multi-family residential districts into the table, which, as I mentioned, were new. So we've integrated those and made them, made those standards step up incrementally in line with the districts that are already there. So I guess we also made some other changes. Really, just to try to keep as much information on here clean as possible, we've just relocated your setback information per site, and your setbacks onto a single column instead of having them all spread out. And we've upped your minimum lot furniture requirements to ensure that the shape of your lots are more rectangular in nature or feasible. This will help you create an urban fabric that supports more connectivity, because you, the more rectangular lots you have, the user it is to form a street grid. So more points of connection in that way. So that's the changes to your table. So this is what probably developers will be their first stopping point, so that's why I pulled that out for you all. So we had a lot of red lines in the graphs that we have been sent to you as well. I think I counted close to 130. Some of them were just formatting tweaks. Some of them were quick little spelling mistakes fixes. But I'm going to go over the big red lines. So if you'd like to have your graphs open, this will just kind of go straight down the line that way. And again, I think there's four slides of this. If you have any questions at any point in time, send them in.
Are you going to go over the new notice provisions, that kind of thing? Need to grasp those changes.
You will. That's on Slide three. All right, so I guess I'll just launch right into it. So first change was made to Section 94.1A. That is your purpose and intent section. We relocated the statement about prioritizing health, safety, and general welfare to the top of the page because that is a reference to the police powers from which our zoning authority starts, and it's also really why we do what we do, is to protect the public and to act on behalf of their well-being. Section 94.1B, we've relocated the pretensions downwards. This is just to kind of streamline and it looked better in terms of formatting. Section 94.4D, we struck out the term that stated "upon this specific date". So if you actually had a date in there, we took that out because we don't want to, we want to prevent potential conflicts down the line if you were to make another change to your ordinance. So this time, just whenever you adopt it, that's when it takes effect. Section 94.3E1, we now, as I stated previously, require professional seals by the designers on the site plan submitted as part of your permit review process. That's just the best practice and for quality control. Section 94.3B7, we now require private roads to be built to GDOT standards, same as your public roads. This is just to ensure that you're not, that you're going to be getting a high-quality product with private developments as well as public. Section 94.3B11, we now require all utility systems to be shown on the site plan drawings. This is to make sure that we can review and ensure that there's ease of access for long-term maintenance, there's no conflicting things with tree lines and things of that nature. So it's to facilitate our, the review process. Section 94.3B, I think 13 and 14, we cross-referenced other chapters. And again, we require for best practice that the stormwater plan which is submitted, be prepared by a licensed professional engineer or a landscape architect licensed in the state of Georgia. Section 94.3C, we now require that building plans for any vertical construction be prepared by either an engineer or a licensed architect. Section 94.3E34, we just cleaned up an administrative feature. We clarified that no reimbursements for review fees will be issued unless it was a clerical error. And then we state that work performed outside of that permit's scope of work could result in revocation of the permit. Section 94.15, again, we stripped single-family detached construction from the R2 and R3 residential districts, and we created the new ones that I mentioned. Section 94.15C, D, E, and F, same thing. Section, oh, now we're at the table. Table 94.16, we clarified the measurements used by adding the standard of measurement that we're requiring for the information that we request. We added the SFA and MFR districts into the table, again, for ease of use by the community, updated lot furniture density and impervious surface requirements for the reasons previously stated. Section 94.16D, we now applied lot standards to the assembly tract as a whole. And we also required that, we also required that if you're constructing townhomes, the buildings, the groupings of townhomes, maximum floor units per building, and that they be spaced 20 feet apart. That is for fire safety. Section 94.16E, we removed the desert, the infill district, DR6. We now refer also users to the table, just looping them back in. Section 94.16F, we require that 35% of project floor area for non-residential uses be provided for projects in the central business district. This is an economic development thing. You want a diversity of uses in your district. It goes a long way to helping to revitalize those communities. So that's why that was integrated. Section 94.24GHI, residential projects must bring in a non-residential use. Again, economic development, diversity of uses, long-term resilience, and helping also to enhance the vision in your comprehensive plan. Section 94.25, we added an open space requirement to your PUD district. I believe it's 10%. All your other districts have an open space requirement. This is just extending that same open space consideration to your PUD district. Section 94.34A, we described the boundary of your, I believe, airport overlay. This is just a backup, you will also have that clarified and for laid out in your zoning map specifically. Throughout the whole document, we've also replaced the term "conditional" with "special use" for the state law consistency reason that I've mentioned previously. Section 94.50, we've updated your use table. So the term "P" now means prohibited, not permitted. "A" is now used to indicate allowed uses, and "S" is now referring to special uses, formerly referenced as conditional. Section 94.51 and 94.52G, I believe this is where we're getting to your accessory structures. So we've reduced the height, maximum height now has been dropped from originally 25 down to 16. We've added a maximum density of how many structures you could have on a lot. I believe right now it's two. And we've also said if you intend to use your accessory structure for home occupation or other type of business use, the structure must be safe for people to come and visit it, so it has to pass an inspection. So those are the reasons for those. Section 94.52, below that, we say suites are allowed for your SFA, but not structures. So this pretty much means you can have a little granny apartment above your garage, but you can't have your own structure if you're on a townhome lot, because those two don't really go well, not the way they're usually platted. Section 94.66, we've replaced the term "senior living" with "active adult" because the uses are really not the same. So senior living at the state level tends to have specific requirements, and that brings to mind more memory, assistant living type of arrangements. Active adults more closely aligned with traditional developments. They just happen to have features as part of the structures built that allow for aging in place and more ease of navigation for persons who need ADA assistance. Section 94.68, you've already codified this, that's why it's not redlined. It's part of your alcohol ordinance. We just carried over the wine shop use you've already allowed into your zoning code because that is a land use item, and just keeping things consistent across the board. Table 94.92, we've set distance of five feet for specific features that you could add to your home, for example, solar panels and other type of amenity uses, just tennis courts. We want at least five feet from property lines to prevent neighbors dispute and also privacy. We believe that's very important. Section 94.96B and C, we've now gone into the architectural conversation. So we've now set siding material requirements for your different districts. And we've said you can use specific types of metal products, but you're limited to no more than 10% of those metal accents on your facades. We've also consulted with staff and architects and just what other municipalities allow in terms of products. And the products that we've listed there for metal accents are products that are durable, and they last well, and they tend to be well-integrated into different residential uses and commercial uses, been built across the metro. Section 94.97B and C, we did the same thing for downtown. So this is really just carrying that same architectural standard and best practice all the way down for consistency across the city. All right, I was there. Section 94.111 and 94.115, we said it's all right if you create, as long as you're creating a lot that's for an amenity like an detention pond or open space or other type of infrastructure that needs to be maintained by a property in the long term, you can create lots that are substandard, so that you can plat those out in such a way that would allow for conservation of the uses in the long term or access for the long term. And again, we've required now HOA covenants be established to ensure long-term maintenance of those facilities. 94.113D and E, we require permanent foundations for residential products that want to obtain city sewer water service. We also require dual generators for utilities. This was at staff direction. Section 94.118F through I, we've extended commercial vehicle parking regulations to the new districts to make sure those parking tables apply to the new districts created. We've also tweaked the driveway dimensions that we are requiring for different products. Our purpose for those tweaks is we don't want, one, trucks or cars or vehicles overhanging into public right of way, so we're requiring them to be a little deeper than they previously were. And also, if they're the sidewalk, we require a little bit of extra depth just to make sure you're not accidentally over people who are crossing that lot. So safety is primarily there. Table 94.119, we added a guest parking requirement. And we do allow multi-family residential districts to share spaces to reduce the risk of over-parking, but they still have to provide guest parking space in addition to the baseline parking that is required. Table 94... So one other thing about the camera. When we're talking about sharing, we're envisioning that mixed-use, mixed-use multi-family housing, where you have the four over one, the ground floor, if you have commercial uses for that, you can use that for guest parking. That's kind of what we have by the sharing. Table 94.121C, we, this is about tract circulation and access requirements. So we now say, we now require, we set the number of access points required for a project based on total square footage for non-residential uses that's being instructed rather than the total number of parking spaces. This arose out of a conversation we had regarding industrial districts where it was clear that certain uses might have large structures on them, but they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily very active in terms of parking. For example, like a self-storage facility, very large, but not a whole lot of parking really necessary for those uses because people aren't coming in and out in the same way they might a restaurant. So that's, we set those new updates in that section. Section 94.122H, again, private roads must be built to GDOT standards for new annexed properties, so making that clear from the start for interested parties. Section 94.125, we added criteria to assist staff and or leadership for when to require traffic impact analysis. Those can be very costly, but they're very useful for a variety of problems. And we just integrated some criteria to assist with decision-making there. So something you can point to when you're going to request it. Table, nope, Section 94.132, cleaning up landscape zone measurements. So we don't think you're good trees when you plant them. They're an investment in your city. We want to make sure they thrive and that they survive long-term. So in order to do that, we want to make sure your minimum width is measured correctly. So it's not going to be measured from back curb, one at least seven feet width. If it had been for front of curb, then the curb's usually two feet, you would have lost two. That, that, that could have a very negative impact. Most trees need at least six feet width to survive. 94.133, so we clarified for, this is going to be very handy when your staff's reviewing the plan. We clarified what features can be used towards open space requirements. And we require that open space, when it is being proposed, it can't be little renminbi lots. You don't want the leftovers. You want it to be usable space. You want it to be space that improves the quality of life of the residents living here in some way. So we've integrated requirements to help ensure that. And we do require that this open space be platted as a long-term conservation use to ensure that it's not later encouraged upon and lost. Table 94.139, we require buffers between unlike uses. And we reply, you already have this, but we've applied it to the new districts created. Section 94.157H through J, this is just to help with stormwater runoff. We want to make sure that dumpsters are covered. And if you have restaurant uses or that are going to have grease being generated as a result of it, you want to make sure you have grease traps in there to help make sure that you're processing what's going into your systems to help them last to their maximum lifetime if they can. You don't want it getting clogged up before it's time just because of the lack of a grease trap, for example. Section 94.169, we increased the duration of the vein insurance T from 94 to 36 months, at staff direction. Table 94.187, we added annexation procedures. You know, obviously, you already have these power, we're just codifying that in there and adding the criteria to help assist with final decision-making when you have a proposal. Section 94.206D, we've updated the timeframes for mailing letters to property owners in line with zoning procedures law. So the dates have been changed to no more than, I think it's 15 and 30 days now. Before, we used to have a little bit more time. They shrunk those timelines. So we've updated the timeframes for... So we've updated the timeframes for sending out letters and legal advertisements in your codes that you're confined to that. New regulation. Section 94208ANB, we've changed planning commission hearings to planning. We've changed planning commission hearings to planning commission meetings. This is to reduce liability. Zoning procedures law only requires one be held, and we propose that it be held here in front of council rather than at the planning commission meeting. That way it also reduces a little bit more flexibility in terms of when you can advertise your planning commission meetings for the public. Those meetings will still be held. Their input will still be sought. I think the procedure will be having changes. It's just the official hearing will be held here. And we did point that out to the planning commission. We're on board with the change. Section 94225, we outline advertising requirements for administrative variances. Just to keep things straight in everybody's mind, we carry over things from the general standard processes. Section 94238, we added references to annexation, updated the advertising timeline as previously mentioned. So now you need 35 and 45. Hold on a second. I think I skipped something. Okay. 94246D and E, we replaced conditional uses with special uses. We've, and I've heard you've talked about this. So yes, it's all in that section, all these changes about annexations. Section 94272, 273, and 274, we've set timelines for appealing decisions made by staff. We've removed reference to Ritter Cirque du Orway. I need a lawyer to help me say that. And that's another state law. They're not changing the way it should be appealed at the state level. So we've replaced that with the new terminology that should be referenced. And we've clarified the zoning officials authority to help process that appeal. And then finally, her, the last bit of your zoning code changes, we've updated your definition sections. So any new uses, how bad is the table and how defined? And any regulations that we spotted while we were doing a review that were in the definitions of the state would be extracted and relocated to the appropriate sections. And that's just a best practice. So it prevents potential conflicts where you update something in your core code and then forget about the definitions. So those were all the zoning code changes. Before I switch over to the sign code changes, anything I can answer? All right.
Got some questions?
We went through a year of this, but.
More than a year, almost two years.
It was, it was quite exhausting to reach the point that we're at. And we greatly appreciate the help that CPG gave us on this.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
At this point, and all of this being done, which is not, because we'll still have to go to council and get all this at our next meeting. But, but my question is, how do we stand in relation to our neighbors?
In what way?
Our code versus our neighbor's codes.
Your code is very good. In terms of implementability, that's really what defines a successful code. And your code is unchannable, easy to use, has sections and tables and graphics that the public can use to refer to and get a quick sense of how they can build and use their properties. Your land use table is flexible and it allows for decision-making for uses that may not even yet have been anticipated. It is a good code.
Thank you.
May I interrupt briefly and add that this occurred at a time when there was a fair amount of public outcry about the densities that we were suspected of wanting to bring to our community. And I think some of these things were very, very insurmountable in reducing those densities. And that includes the simplification of our categories, but also the increase in the commercial requirements for our PUDs. And so it's really, we were taking the public's wishes at heart when we made some of these changes. Very, very proud of the work we've done.
Agreed totally with that. Thank you, Dr. Broden.
All right.
Biscay?
Yeah, I'll just finish it up first. So now we're in chapter 95. This is your sign code. We didn't do much to it. We just updated monument signs section, which is a small piece of it. So section 9522A2, we've changed the dimensions of monument signs allowed along Highway 515. We were told that economic development in those areas are critical to the city. And allowing slightly larger signs, they will be good in order to help promote businesses along that corridor. So you'll notice we've allowed certain sign bonuses for several corner lots. The number of signs you can have is based on the number of frontages your lot has. So if you are on a corner lot, we give you the option. You can have both your signs or you can forfeit one of the signs on one of your frontages, perhaps the less traveled one. And then by forfeiting that, you get a density bonus on the other of 30% of the size. So that was a very, I think, very innovative change to give people the opportunity to do that. Section 9422B, we've also updated the distance of placements of your monument signs. So if you're between, I believe, five and 10 feet, you have to be at least 10 feet back from the right of way. If you're greater than 10 feet, it's now 15, 15 feet back from right of way. And this is just to, for safety. You don't want vehicles who are trying to enter the road to be blocked in terms of visibility. So those right of way distances help ensure everybody's safety. We also set a standard that says if, for emergency services, we're asking that monument signs now provide the address on the base. And as part of that addressing requirement, we say your letters have to be between five and seven inches. That way they can be easily viewed from road by vehicles to try and find you. And then table 9525, we've cross-referenced new monument requirements from the section on the table. And we've updated the definition to maybe just clean it up a bit. So things that used to be in your definition, for example, is you have to hide the supports. We've now taken that out of the definition, put it in the code. We've clarified that the base of your monument signs don't necessarily, they have to be at least two feet tall. They have to be made of a certain material, but they don't count necessarily for design area. That we're treating more of a design feature than a part of the sign proper. So I guess that's the, that's the high levels of what we hit. Any questions on your sign ordinance?
Again, we're exhausted on this.
All right.
I do think maybe you need to clarify a little bit that on the advertising and the posting that, you know, for rezoning, they said that for rezoning, they didn't really change the notice requirements. You could do it between 15 days, not before 15 days, and not longer than 45 days. But for like, what they call quasi-judicial determinations, which are like a variance, they did not do consistent notice time requirements. And they said it had to be at least 30 days out. So a concern we had in trying to draft all this was that you had two different notice requirements, which means that staff would have to keep up with and do it correctly, two different notice requirements. So instead of doing that, as I understand it, the amendments make it consistent that we got to do a notice between 30 days and 45 days. What I want you all to realize is that since we changed the planning commission hearing to a planning commission meeting, that those notice requirements only apply to the hearing before the city council. But we can't do 15 days anymore under what the ordinance provides. It'll be 30 days. We got to run that notice, you know, whether it's a variance or a rezoning or whatever else. And I just wanted you all to be aware that since for rezoning now, we're saying you got to advertise 30 days ahead, that due to timing of when an application is made, you know, we may end up having to push over to another meeting in order to make that 30 days instead of the 15 days. So we tried to simplify it from an administrative viewpoint where staff can have one rule to follow. And that makes it easier on them. They don't have to try to figure out, can I do a 15 day or can I do a 30 day? The rule is always 30 days from the hearing before the council. And I think that will help us not have procedural errors that somebody could use to try to challenge it. But it is going to be sort of an administrative change that we're going to have to get used to in handling any type of zoning procedure. And hopefully we've minimized it, you know, by changing the planning commission hearing to a planning commission meeting. We don't have to meet those time deadlines for that meeting because you're only required to have only one zoning hearing on a zoning matter. And we're going to do that before the council. So, you know, I got worried that, hey, if we did 30 days before the planning commission and 30 days before the council, that you had a very narrow timeframe to try to get those ads in. And so changing it to a meeting for the planning commission means we only got to advertise with the council. So a little bit procedural difference. Y'all won't notice it as much. My staff will be handling all the logistics. But I just wanted you to understand that since we're pushing from 15 days up to 30 days, every now and then, you know, we're going to miss a council meeting and have to push it over to the next one just depending on when they file their application and get through the process.
So changing our work sessions and our P and Z meetings, does that have an impact on this? It seemed like it would have some sort of impact some way.
I think.
Now that we're dropping down.
Yeah, we'll, when staff sits down and looks at the new sequence of meetings, we'll make sure that we built or keep that in mind.
It sounds like we'd be more efficient because we only have to have one here. But it also sounds like we have to pay particular attention to when we can have that specific hearing.
I would agree with that.
We're just going to have to make sure that we get our notices in the, in our legal.
And I would agree with that. Your understanding.
Is that right?
But the changes do not, there's no change in the public being able to be heard at the planning and zoning meeting.
At the planning and zoning meeting, they'll have a public comment portion of the meeting, and they can make a comment about the proposed rezoning. So the public still gets input at the planning commission level. We're just not designating it as a hearing per se because there are mandatory notice requirements tied into a hearing as opposed to the. And I just wanted to bring that up. You know, y'all will really have to deal with it. And I think it'll be easier for staff once we get used to it because one rule for everything, and that always makes life simpler.
Well, even for the public, largely it's not going to change their timeframe as such. They can still come to that meeting, but it's still going to be a 30-day process because we have to now put that 30 days out there. So they can still come and do their public comments. But we must make sure that we have that out there, 30 days. All right.
Thank you.
Good job, Paul.
Thank you.
Just one more item. We did have three items that were incorrectly in the draft after we publicized it or published it. So I wanted to make sure for the record that I identified those three things. And then when you are making your recommendation at your next meeting, that you include these so that as we're adopting the new document as it is, we'll include these, we can make the edits. So there are three, section 9496C, the 10% max metal accent for commercial. We have section 94113D, which we are removing the words "or curtain rail constructed", which is referring to a glass or steel when we are looking for mason. And then section 14-16 use table, adding a permitted for multifamily residential in the multifamily residential law. So we may have prohibited it.
That's one way to end your session.
And we had some density questions, so you know, we just created a district to never use. And so, but those are the three, three items.
Okay, so.
And Mayor, can I jump in here because I want to be sure we meet technicalities? I assume that's our new zoning map? Are we going to have any discussion about the existence of the map? Or, or do we just need to note that we have the new zoning map here in the public hearing and available for public review? And I may be jumping ahead of you.
So, no, no, that's fine. So yes, we have, this will be our new map. We've had it for the last couple of weeks or more than that, I think. And it has been available. This will be what they will sign and seal, and this will be our official map. We did update, Ms. Coleman and I did identify all the parcels that have been annexed and also rezoned. And we updated the colors to reflect more of what the American Planning Association uses so that you'll know red is usually retail, commercial. So you can see our red and then our residential's in the downtown area and such. So very tricky map to make because of the shape of the town. So trying to get everything in there with roads and parcels.
Beautiful, isn't it?
Oh, thank, you know, I wasn't going to use green because I really prefer Christmas colors, but I just thought the blue was a little bit more catchy.
I like that.
Good point.
And Mayor, I want to be sure that you asked for a public comment about the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance, and the zoning map. And just so we have that reflected in.
So any questions from council on this as far as comments before I go to the public?
Yes, sir.
At this point, anyone in our audience that has any questions about our new sign ordinance, please come forward and we will hear your comments. That being said, then I'm going to close the hearing portion of our meeting tonight. And now, Mr. Seifert, do I need to open up a new meeting? Since we were, that was part of an existing one?
I think we should, Mayor, just to be clear that we were continuing the prior meeting and now we're going to open up a new meeting. We probably need to adjourn the prior meeting and then open up a new.
We do stand adjourned with that. I've already done that. We're adjourned with that. And at this point, I'm going to open up tonight's regular meeting. And good Lord. I would entertain a motion by council at this point that we go into executive session to discuss.
Sir.
And motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. And we stand in the.
Thank you, Ken.
And into the executive session.